Okay, did you hit the record?
Red circle.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we're, we're live. Welcome, everyone. This is a city council work session, Monday, April 13th, 2020, 4:30, Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. You may call in with public access. Phone number is 646-749-3122. Meeting number is 791-645-725. Again, that's 646-749-3122 is the phone number. And the meeting number is 791-645-725. Bear in mind that at a work session, basically, we ask you to speak if you have something to do with that particular issue. Jim?
Yeah, and just again pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.8 and the Governor's State of Public Health Emergency Declaration, this meeting is being held electronically because the ongoing public health emergency in the state of Iowa has made it impossible to have a meeting in person. You just went through the phone number and access. I think we do have a couple of people who are online, two. We do have one presentation that will be done by a call-in. Other than that, yes, this is a work session, so typically, we wouldn't have public comments occurring anyway.
Sounds good. Okay, we're going to work on the proposed regular agenda for April 20th, 2020. First up is public hearing, consideration of consolidated transit grant application. Nick?
Good evening. So, the item in front of you, the public hearing for the consolidated transit app, is something that we do on an annual basis to apply for the funding to run the Burlington Urban Service. In the memo, you can see I talked about some of the different types. So, there's FTA funds, which is the Federal Transit Assistance, and then there's STA, which is the State Transit Assistance. We are going to receive $469,665 in FTA funds. This is up from the last year amount. And then the STA is $256,978. This is actually down a couple hundred bucks from last year's projected numbers. And also, in the, so we put out a public hearing notice. We have to advertise it for 30 days. We talk about the Transit Improvement Plan, and in there, I talk about five years' worth of bus purchasing. This, this project, or this list has shifted every year since I've been here. It all depends upon the scoring of the way the DOT deals with the ranking of the buses. So, every year, I send in an inventory of how many miles the buses are and the condition. And then, I kind of reflect that. So, in here, you'll see, you know, 723B is just the coding we use for a bus, and it's a 2001 Ford. That one, I have listed first. Couple of years ago, it may have been listed fourth or fifth. And, you know, things have just shuffled around, the way we use the buses and can put the miles on that. The one thing I would bring of note, and it's kind of been discussed with Jim, is the CARES funding. I received notification that through the CARES Act that was passed through Congress, the Burlington Urban Service will receive about $1.3 million in funding that could be used as of January 20th of this year. There is no end date on that. However, the DOT is going to put a contract together. I haven't seen that contract. They'll come out here in the next following weeks. And they'll, it'll be able to be used through the end of fiscal year '23.
Is that to help us, is that to help make us whole from any, any reduction in income as a result of the COVID?
That is its intention. However, it doesn't have to be used solely for the purposes of replacing lost revenue. One thing, in our current status, I checked year-to-date, we budgeted $90,000 in transit fare to help fund the department. We're at $60,000. And unless, what?
So, that'll be about it?
That'll be about it. We may see some third-party administrator checks come in for Medicare/Medicaid. Some of those lag two or three months behind, so we may see some of that. The one thing, in the light of COVID, is we have not, we're not taking money for the transaction function of it. A lot of our riders have bus passes provided through those means, anyway. And then, the school kids aren't running, and those are a big portion of our, or our monthly bus passes. So, I would not expect to bring in any more money for the fiscal year, which puts us at about two-thirds of our projected revenue. And so, some of that money will be helpful, helpful to make us whole in this current operating year. But moving forward, you know, the other thing is, is the STA funds, the payments that we're going to receive from the state will not likely be in the full amount because they're suffering. So, road use tax monies go to pay for that. And they said that they're down $300,000 for this last time, and that's not even for the month of April. So, we will see reduced STA payments for this current year. So, some of this CARES funding will help cover some of the slack for the last couple of months of this current fiscal year. But also, moving forward, we are able to use some of this funding for capital purchasing. And I'm trying to put in, it's hard to capital plan when you, you know, you don't normally capital plan that far in advance, but all of a sudden, now you're saying, hey, we need to know what you need now. And so, we're going to try and put a list together of what we're going to try and get out of capital funding. Because 1.3 million is more than what an annual operating year is for the bus. Our, our projected budget for next year is $1,084,000, so.
I didn't see anything in the packet on this. Was, is this grant or low interest loans?
The CARES funding is all grant.
Okay. Is there, is there requirements as to percentages like there is with the PPP? Were percentages of have to go to payroll or things like that?
There's a difference, they'll, they'll have statistical tracking on those funds. That's different than what we have for normal operating monies. We have to track those as well.
Okay.
I don't know how they're going to break up that tracking. They haven't told us that. They've handed us, you know, said, here, you're going to get this money, but they haven't really said what the backend's going to mean yet. So, I just wanted to keep that in, in the mind set of the context of this grant application. You know, the one thing to think of moving forward is also, our ridership is a part of how it dictates what percentage we get in FTA and STA funding. So, fiscal year '19, we had 198,000 rides. You know, the years prior, we're in the 213, 200. It's kind of fluctuated over the, you know, the last five years. Right now, we are at probably 25% of the, or less of our ridership that we would normally have. So, you take that and the idea of, you know, a quarter of the year, that's a, that's a decent impact. Now, everybody's going to have that same impact roughly. Some other transit agencies have shut down service other than essential healthcare rides. And so, theirs may be a little bit different, but essentially, that's what the CARES funding is intended to do, is to know that there's going to be some, you know, two years in the rear, because that's what the way the ridership works, type funding to help transit agencies out.
Are we seeing a reduction in overall expenses as a result of that?
Somewhat. I mean, right now, you know, in a typical day, when schools in operation, we'll have upwards of nine buses on the road at one time in the morning and then the afternoon. And then, we shift down to six. I've actually reduced that number because we just, we weren't having the rides. There was no sense putting that many buses on the road. We have four buses out. We have six total, just because of the transition of buses to different routes. But we have four buses on the road, meaning we also have four people operating those buses. So, our reduction, we're paying them through the CARES function at a lesser number. But we, we have seen, we're seeing a reduced amount of expenditures.
And then, the road use tax that's collected is typically collected through fuel tax, right?
That, as well as licensing.
At what, at what point will we see the payments for the monies being collected in this quarter come to us? When will we, when will we experience that deficit? Is it six months down the road? Or how far in the rears are those payments made?
We'll probably see that now, in April, from, from some of March, March's impact. But March, compared to what we are experiencing now, is probably nowhere near what March was. I mean, we are, there's so much less going through now in the month of April than there was in March.
So, there's a 30-day return on that? 30 days is?
I would say it's probably a little bit longer than that, just because of the transaction of licenses. Fuel tax is probably a little bit quicker turnaround, but.
Final quarter, final payment for road use tax? Do we get that in August? So, it's two, it's the second month in arrears. So, the, what, the impact from the March, we'll see in May. And then, my question, like, on operating costs within bus, you won't start to see even the impact of that really on the financial system. If, if you'll, fuel use will be down, but that doesn't get billed out until a month in arrears. Vehicle maintenance costs will be lower, but that's a month in arrears. Majority of our drivers, we've tried to maintain within the system. So, even as we've had routes cut, we've kept them on payroll. So, a lot of our costs there have stayed fairly similar. We do have a couple of positions where we had hours that were available that people, that, well, that we just didn't, that we, that people didn't take. So, we've, that, that's been someone who's gone off of our payroll system and hit the unemployment side. But it's a small, very small portion of what our overall operating costs are.
And I guess, the road, he's right on the road use tax part of things. But what I mean by the STA, the road use portion that funds STA, is that STA, the state sees that there's going to be a problem with road use tax. So, they start making judgment calls in advance of that road use tax, or where it would affect our other function, our street-type function. So, they start making the STA drawbacks earlier than that, I guess, is the way I would say it.
So, the reduction in STA funds was because they changed the formula?
No, it's because the state uses road use tax monies to fund that, those STA monies, and then you just don't have it.
Okay, okay.
Because of the reductions in people's driving and feeling up and stuff like that.
And my next question has to do with RagBri. We had increased ridership month of July, but that probably isn't going to impact this.
And it wouldn't affect this current fiscal year, anyway. It would be next year.
Oh, because it's, okay.
It's two years in the rear for the ridership.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But, moving into the next fiscal year, we should have a pretty good idea where we're trending from an expenses and from an income standpoint, in at least the first quarter, if not further into the year, moving forward, right?
Yeah, and, and this CARES fund should help us a, a pretty good amount. I tried to put together, we haven't talked about our capital funding. But right now, we have three buses that I would receive notice. Take a little while to process some of that paperwork sometimes, but I have three buses that I've been told have been, have received funding to be replaced. And with this CARES fund, I think we can probably replace two or three buses. And out of a fleet of 14, and having three buses already that are only two years old or less, that's a huge improvement. I have some numbers that, some of these buses that I have had for a decade, you know, their lifespan has costed us $150,000. When you could have bought a new bus, and they might, you're going to have that. You can't turn that over in that type of duration. But just simply replacing three of them can alleviate you a lot. You know, we have our new buses that have cost us, you know, over the last two years, $4,000 in maintenance costs versus other ones that are costing us $15,000 or more annually. So, that's a huge step in the direction to try and alleviate some of our operating costs.
And then, maybe we can get a bus that will carry a bike? We've had that request for years.
Well, and, and that's the question. And so, if we were going to do one bus, we would have to outfit the whole fleet in, in bike racks. And so, the question is, is do we want to retrofit that? We've put that in front of the other council, and that was not something that they wanted to do. But it's something we could do moving forward. It wouldn't take that much when you're ordering a bus to have a bike rack put on that. But that does limit, it puts you in question on what you're doing for operations, because that one bus, when you buy it, has a bike rack, but it may not be on the route that, you know, Joe wants to get his bike on and go towards.
But I think as we, in, with Tiger Grant coming in, and we increase the walkability of our downtown, I think that's seriously something that we should look about.
Something I can look at when we're buying buses.
Retracing those buses for bikes, yeah.
You're, you're talking probably five grand a bus.
You've got to start somewhere.
So, I mean, theoretically, you could use some of this CARES money to, to do that. I would just have to make that upfront statement that we're going to use these CARES monies for a certain dollar figure of capital purchasing.
Well, I think, I think moving forward, just not knowing the certainty with this specific line item, is it makes sense to do the turnaround, turnover with the buses, get the new ones in because of the return on those three individual buses? But as far as accessories, I don't know if I'd want to commit to that at this point, not knowing what we're going to expect as far as income goes. That's my two cents. Okay. Anybody else, anybody have any questions for Nick or Jim on this issue, Council? No? Jim, do you have anything else to add? Okay.
So, is, I mean, the first, the actual action item here that you have is a fairly simple one. It's the annual FTA amount. The bigger piece is where is the, is just letting you know that there is some grant funding that we have that's coming towards us. We don't have a whole lot of rules on it. I know you've had a few conversations in regards to potential use of it. But $1.3 million, a little over $400,000 a year over the next three years. Our operating costs in the general fund, the net that, of general fund dollars that goes to support transit is 200 to 250, 250,000 annually for just base operations. We do have a portion of that that we've set aside. That's, I think we collect about $70,000 for property taxes specifically for a transit system. So, on the transit levy, I can't remember the exact dollar amount. But we have to spend some general fund money on transit in one form, one way, shape, or form, because we've collected property taxes specifically for it. We can use funds to offset the rest of the loss, though, or, or general fund funds that go to, to run transit. Not knowing what's going to happen with STA funds, you know, we're looking at, I, I know I sent you road use tax and that, what they're looking at for potential loss of funds. It's probably in the, for road use tax on a $3.3 million operating budget, we're probably $300,000 down this year, is my guess, somewhere in that neighborhood, maybe a little less. The question will be what happens with car purchases and driving moving forward. Right now, we're in a spot where driving is down 50%. And car sales are off at, I think, at least that much. So, you've got some major funding streams right now that are very much gone. Now, how long does that take to get back? Well, road use tax-wise, we're probably okay. We've got a little, we've got about $3 million sitting in, or $2 million sitting in that account. So, it, on a $3 million budget with $2 million sitting in, in the, in the operating account, we're, we're okay to weather having some downturns in, in income. The STA, it'll, we'll have to see how that plays out. One of the things that will offset, Eric, if you want to put up the local option sales tax. And one of the things that we looked at is, what's the header on this one? So, Travis was here last, or by, by remote, remotely was here. Talked about where local option sales tax might sit for this next year. He talked about being, being in a position, he's talking with schools about recommending budgeting 10% less for this next fiscal year. Well, if you look at that, this sheet for revenues up at, up there at the top, the current projection for FY '20 is close to 4.3 million. And then, what I have with a 10% reduction next year is at 3.6 million. And you may say my math is pretty fuzzy there. That's because there's a makeup payment that the, that Lost has that occurs in November. We received a $380,000 in makeup payment this last November. We're looking at probably a zero-dollar makeup payment next year. The system is set up where it should be, if, if things run the way that they've, if, that they projected it perfectly in advance, that makeup payment that occurs in November should be about $200,000. Well, that's not there. We budgeted it about that $200,000, and the base being $4 million. If you take the base $4 million, down $400,000 or 10%, you are down $600,000 overall income. Couple of things that we have here, I, if you look on the yellow, about halfway down for the different expenditure items, bus is listed. We were, we had budgeted $84,000 in the current year to go towards bus purchases, and then $24,000 in next year as a match towards some of our DOT funding that he was, that Nick was just talking about. I'm taking out those out of Lost and kind of saying that any matches that we're needing to do, that we are either using the levy from the general fund or this new funding stream to cover what we have to cover for costs of bus purchases above and beyond what we get from the transit, transit system for grants, to try to help offset our loss of revenue. I've talked with Eric. If you look further down, there's Trails. Trails was listed in next year's budget for 142,000 of local option sales tax. He had two different projects in there. My recommendation is one of those projects goes away. Eric will be talking about the other one here tonight. But the one that we haven't gone after grant funding yet, as this was, the $100,000 was a match on grant funding. Just talking about getting rid of that out of this next year's budget and reprogramming it into our thought process next year, as we do our five-year CIP. The tennis courts is an item that will be talked about yet. I'm showing here that whatever the shortfall is, that you're covering it. It wasn't a budgeted item, but the, we'll cover the shortfall in here. If you've got someone who's raised $70,000 to put towards, to put, put towards this project along with the Starker funds. But if you look down here, that means at the bottom, that ending balance, we were originally supposed to end up in that little box at the bottom, at $700,000 of carryover funds target, which is 15% of expenditure, 625. Right now, with those things taken out in the reduced revenues, we're about $100,000 short.
On the golf course equipment, would it be a possibility to look at delaying the purchase of new golf carts?
We'll have to, as we move forward, we'll have to have some of these discussions. And some of it is, we're, we're doing projections that are way out into what-ifs. But we are going to have some other things that we're probably, those are the kinds of things that we're going to have to think about. Are we eliminating or not? The, again, the, the things that are up towards the top, the police operations and equipment, the police equipment, I'm not looking at making any recommendations for eliminating. The fire department, I wouldn't eliminate. The creative placemaking is one that, if you, is another agenda item up for tonight. I would say that, that would be one that I wouldn't do the match on. And Eric may have a way of making that project still work even without a match. And I, I think you might cover some of that as we get into it.
Okay.
One that we'll have a tough time with is if you, the 50% tax relief. We had budgeted that to be 2.1, just over 2.1 million. If we're a 10% reduction in revenue, that goes down to 1.8 million. So, that's a $300,000 hole in the general fund. Again, Nick's being able to talk about transit, being able to put some funding in there to offset some of our operating losses there. Depending on what happens with STA funding and how this, where it all balances out, that may, might help to solve some of that hole in the general fund. But we, we've got some things that we can see that can help to alleviate this as we move forward, but there's going to still be more work to do. The other sheet you might as well show, because it's part of this equation, too, hotel motel. I did some asking about what should we be looking at with hotel motel. There, one of our major chains is not anticipating having revenues in it until June. That $700,000, based, based off of what they're talking about, that $700,000 is what they see, a, a pretty good baseline for what the revenue should be this year. In fact, they had said that they didn't think that we'd collect that much this year. We were on track to collect $900,000 back in January. That's a significant loss. One of the things that you had a decision on last week that helps in here, not funding the docs, helps, hurts for a project, but it helps for what we have for a problem here in the hotel motel tax. This isn't an issue just for this year, it's an issue for next year. As I talked with the hotel operator, they're looking at the fall. They think it's a 25% reduction for the whole fall from what they would have otherwise collected. They see people traveling, taking a while for them to get back online, and they see corporate travel being significantly lower. And their hope is that by next June, they'll be back on pace for what a normal operations would be. But they, they're looking at a full year to get back to where we were before. So, if you look, they were, they're budgeting 20% reduction in hotel motel usage. I'm showing here 17.5%, which isn't quite that much. They don't, that operator isn't the, the only operator in the community. And others would probably have a little bit different projections. But I can show you a 10% reduction, and it's still going to be the same issue. There isn't enough funds. The box areas gets to where our ending balances are. We're supposed to be on track for $245,000. Even with taking the docs out, if you have a 17.5% reduction, we're going to end up at, that would put us about $85,000, and we should be at 200 in this fund. And part of the concern you have here is that the balances, you know, there's a box in the center there. Below that, we have sub-funds within hotel motel. We set, set aside funds with specific purposes. The auditorium, riverfront parks, community field, cultural, they all have their own balances that are in those funds. Now, we can reallocate out of them. But if you keep those, those ones that are specifically for specified purposes, and then look at what your free balance is, we're a deficit of $100,000. One of the things that we still don't know what to, well, we have a few things here that are going to have to be addressed as we move forward. What's going to happen with golf tournaments this next year? Are we going to see some changes in participation levels? You're going to, I think it'd be, I don't think you lose any at the beginning of the year. Or may, you lose a few at the beginning, potentially, one of those getting rescheduled? Or maybe that's out at the RecPlex that I'm thinking about?
Both of them.
Both the RecPlex and the golf course, I mean, right now, the golf course is still open, and it's getting some good use, but it's not getting the regular use that it would normally get. And how does that play out during the course of the season? The RecPlex, we're not sure of yet, either. Kind of put in here, what are, what do we need to put in to make those work with the way operations were last year and moving into this spring? We don't have anything built in here if there's a shortfall. And the place that I would see it most likely out of the two is the RecPlex, that we would have to put more funds in here. And the other one, I've highlighted the Convention Visitors Bureau. We do a percentage over to them, and it's by contract, and they know that they only get a certain percentage. But for them to maintain their operations, especially this year, I did ask them to talk, to, to come up with if, if they need, in order to keep from ruining their operations, just, do they need to have a baseline that they hit? Because we're trying to support all of our baselines, too. And we need to make sure that we're working with them through that, too. So, I think that we need to be prepared for potentially, in the current years, if the revenues in hotel motel are truly down at that $700,000, and they're only getting $210,000, is there a little bit higher number that they may need to make sure that they don't just destroy their operation, too?
I would, I would, I would back you up on my, my concern. Besides the visitors playing at the RecPlex and the golf course, the, the real concern for me is corporate travel. We've already been notified of one of the businesses I'm involved with, that we may not see our reps for the rest of the year. And indeed, now that they've figured out how to do these virtual meetings, we, they, they might, we might not see them again if they don't see a loss of, of service and business. So, it's, it's a tough one. That could really cripple us.
It will hurt, it will change dynamics, and it won't, I mean, that's part of the economy that isn't just going to come back. It will hurt, it will change dynamics and it won't, I mean, that's part of the economy that isn't just going to come back. Quickly. Now, it will come back. I mean, I sold private security back in two thousand and one. Nine eleven changed how people looked at private security at companies, but it, and it, it, it did come back. They got less concerned about it, but that was five years later. So it's, it will take a while for those kinds of impacts to work through the system. I know all that doesn't have to do with Nick's, but this stuff ties into, I think, four items that are on the agenda. That, that we need to keep in mind as, as we move forward. So I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Jim. All right, next up will be. Next up will be ordinance, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending the chapter one six-three A point oh-seven of Burlington, Iowa Code of Ordinances Concerning the Hearings and Rights in the Case of Junk Vehicles. Mr. Tisland.
No changes from the previous reading. This doesn't change anything within the code other than how we, or how people have the knowledge of the right to notice. It is listed in our code under chapter one sixty-three, but not specifically in one sixty-three A, so that's what we're adding. So not a huge change there.
Is there any questions for Mr. Tisland on this? We pretty will discuss it. Now, is this something we can go to the final reading? Possibly next, next week?
Yeah, we should be able to.
Okay, let's, let's work on that, please. Next up a resolutions. First one is resolution authorizing the sales and issuance of the two thousand and twenty C. Including call payoff of the two thousand and nineteen D ban on maturity. Jim or Stephanie? Jim?
And this would be a follow-up on our new financing, new money for the two, two projects. TIFF, the flood wall down at the riverfront and then our major street project, about five point six million overall. I think that was two point three million, or two point three percent on the five point six million dollar project. The financing came in a little differently than what we had planned on. This is a private placement. And Travis, I think went over this too a little bit.
Yeah, I think he did. Does anybody have any thoughts or concerns on that council? No? Okay. Thank you, Jim. Number two is a resolution rejecting all bids for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty Dankworth Park Tennis Court Resurfacing Project. Continued from April sixth, two thousand and twenty city council meeting. Mr. Tisland.
So we got the one bid from all weather courts. They've done other workforce in the past at one hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred. We have a hundred and five thousand budget from Starker funds. As we've discussed, the local tennis association with Brian Jasper is working to raise funds as well. He had sent over, I think you may have seen his spreadsheet. He has seventy-two thousand, not quite, just seventy-one thousand nine eighty-five and fifty cents committed.
You just changed that today says seventy, seventy-two eight.
Okay, so seventy-two eight. So that, just under five thousand short on the project. It is a, a project that is only going to increase in cost the longer we do it. It is something that is used quite a bit. So we'd like to see it occur, but as Jim showed, I think we had fifteen thousand shown in the spreadsheet there. Hopefully it's under that, under five thousand to, to continue the project, so.
Mr. Japson, I know he emailed us. I just had a conversation with him a few minutes before the meeting today. And he was, he was concerned about writing us a check for what he had now to get, showing good faith that he's ready to roll on this. He has other pitches out, so I would, I would say that we would move ahead with that project.
I spoke with him just for the meeting and he said he'd get, he's already got a lot of it collected. Yeah. There's some organizations in the area that have large financial commitments to him, so we'll get those dollars once the projects kind of start. They've got a timeline they have to keep, but they've committed to it. So again, I think we should move forward with the project.
Would that bid still be viable then, or you have to go through the process?
Yeah, we've had communication with them that we would work with them on that. They were just waiting to, they knew where we're at in the process, waiting to hear where we're at. So we'd probably recommend denying the rejection of bid and then having a second resolution approving the.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
That's how Kathleen wants to have it.
That sounds good.
So we'll add a second resolution.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Japson, and also the people donating to the tennis courts. This has been an issue since the three of us were elected anyway. And we really appreciate his work on that. It, you can tell it's a passion and thank you, Brian. Okay, number five, unless there's any questions on that. No? Number five is a resolution approving the acceptance of STBG funds for improvements on Summer Street from Harrison Avenue South to Kessler Street intersection. Nick?
This resolution in front of you would accept the monies for, to do Summer Street with STBG funds. If you remember back to the five-year road plan and then conversation in December as to what we would apply for. We applied for STBG funds, the state transportation block grant through the DOT. The actual grant application asked, requested one point four, six fifty, which was fifty percent of the project costs of the two point nine million. There's only one point one five million dollars available, so we, we've received the full amount or been offered the full amount. The reason why I'm having you accept this is because it's a different amount than what we had talked about when we applied for the grant. But I think it's awesome that we got the opportunity to receive this kind of sum to redo the road. So I would recommend accepting the award. We will, I haven't talked through thoroughly with this, Jim, but this is a two thousand and twenty-four project. We're using general fund money. What do we bond? Yeah, I know, I can't, for some reason, it's not coming out of my mouth tonight to, as the match for that, for the difference.
You enjoying that backseat driving there, Nick?
I know. Like my wife.
Anyways, sorry. Thank you, Nick. Does anybody have any questions for Nick on that? No? All right. And number six is a resolution approving the modified creative placemaking project for rural business development grant through the USDA Rural Developments Grant, or Rural Development in the State of Iowa.
So we applied for, was it sixty-eight thousand dollars in grant funds for this project? We were notified that they, of remaining funds were thirty-five thousand five hundred. That's what they had available for the project. If we wanted to accept, we can move forward at that amount. Did have some conversations with the local committee and, I guess, the consultant, and they could do a modified agreement. I think in the resolution there, we had three key strategies that we're looking at. Key building revitalization, housing strategy, and then a public art strategy. So that, with the modified project, it'd be essentially eliminating that public art strategy. Still looking at what we can do with some of the key buildings in downtown that are vacant or underutilized. And then looking at housing, how can we increase the housing availability and potential within our community and what, examining some strategies there. So the consultant did submit a revised budget for that, which would be sixty-seven thousand five hundred. That would, included the city's ten thousand. Talking to the USDA, based on the reduced grant amount, we can reduce the match amount as well. Currently, we have approximately twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in outside funds that are used as match. So a thousand from Burlington Fine Arts, seven hundred and fifty from an individual, five thousand from Great River Health, and fifteen thousand from partnerships economic development. So this resolution was to have the discussion, do you want to continue with the ten thousand that was already committed? Or reduce that amount or eliminate that amount? So if it is completely eliminated, I guess we'd have to have that conversation with them if they would accept a project with no city funds in it. Which they did say we could reduce our local match percentage-wise, so we'd still have that funding. It just would be a city application with no city funds if we didn't have any, so.
So my question is if we eliminate the public arts component, what would that?
That's already eliminated.
That is gone. Okay.
So, you know, I kind of bounced around on this one. We've talked about it before because when it comes to the buildings, I'm interested in the residential part of it, obviously. But as it pertains to, probably going to be pertaining to buildings downtown. I don't really see the difference between the brownfield grants and this creative placemaking and whether we've already done this work before. So I'm, I'm on the fence.
So they're looking to, and I think I'd said to you before, a little more identifying where are these funding sources? Who are the individuals that can do this? What are the actual things? Whereas brownfield was just, these are some grand ideas and let's look at what that could be.
So I sat in on the initial presentation and I think one other one. And essentially, this group is the, the group that helps make the connections between the assessments we've already done and the funding sources and mechanisms and individuals, investor individuals that are out there.
Yeah, I sat in there too.
Right. So this is the, because I asked that same question and I went back to everything that I've been involved with or read in, in years past. I don't, we haven't done anything like this. Were they connect, were they connecting those two? We've done the assessments, but we've not done this piece yet, so. I think we probably would be, we would have to move forward with this project. If we want to maximize the things we've done in the past.
Question is, do we want to move forward with no city funds and see if that's viable or a reduced amount or what, I guess, where are you at? As Jim had shown, it was not having it in there. Did have a contingency on the tennis courts and if those come in higher, there may be some funds available, so that's where.
I also sat in on that meeting and I, it was really exciting to hear what these other communities have done. And I think if we want to keep being a visionary community and keep being vibrant. I also believe that we need to move forward with at least a partial funding of this project.
So that's what, that's what you're looking for is to see if we go zero or half or what, whatever.
Is it a thousand? Is it two thousand? Is it ten? Is it none?
Whatever the least amount you can get away with is, within, within funding the project, so. What is the amount?
It's ten right now.
But what would be the, he said a reduced amount?
We have full outside funds to cover a reduced project. It's just, we're the applicant as a city. And I'd have to, I could ask them if they would accept zero from the city as long as we're showing other community support.
If they tell you that they would accept zero, I would say go with zero. If they say, well, we want a percentage of a certain dollar, then I would say we have to go with that in order to get the, the grant process, right? Does anybody else?
So the, the process would be tell them zero, but then if they say we have, we'll have to have another conversation about it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So do we, do we approve it up to?
I'd rather have another conversation about it.
I could try and get an answer this week, so we'd have something for the.
That would be good, for the council meeting. That way we could move on.
To zero and still move forward, but have zero if, if that's what we can do.
Is that agreeable with everybody? Okay, thanks, Eric. All right. Number seven is a resolution approving the purchase of land at Seven Hundred Valley, Burlington, Iowa. That's the parking lot there.
Yep, this is privately owned by an individual. The city owns the parking lot to the north and to the, every, I guess, to the north of that and then to the west of it. That's behind Wake and Bake and then the former dry cleaners there. Talked to the individual, I guess this has been quite a few months working with him on it. He is amenable to selling it just above the cess value. I think it's a cess value, eleven thousand eight hundred. He asked for twelve thousand. This would allow expansion of that parking lot area into one large parking lot, also eliminate, I guess, trailer storage in the downtown area there. But wanted to bring this forward.
Yeah, our goal here was, this was a good chance to get this in a spot where, I mean, we don't have a plan for repaving this area, but it gets us into our hands and control so that we can, when we have the ability at some point here in the future.
How many parking spots do you think you could fit in a spot like that? You have an idea?
They had somebody draw it up about a year ago, didn't they? Didn't they, there was a number put on it?
There is, because of the way the parking lanes would have to work, I don't know that you would add more than ten. But the biggest thing is, is you would bring better function to that park. It looks, you're going to have to be backed off of the railroad tracks some, so that, there's a little bit of distance between there. The biggest thing is, is there's a height elevation between that parcel and the parking structure that we already own. And it's functionality. It, it, it's got some wallers in it, I guess, and the lighting isn't very, I know, I come up with some pretty good words.
What's a waller?
Is there a hippity-skipity you need to get into?
No, I know. I, I felt it soon as it came out of my mouth.
Can't take Nebraska out of the boy. Go ahead, man.
I know.
That cornhusker stayed up.
Let some hick come work for you.
We like you, Nick.
We haven't, we haven't done engineering on it. Once we put plans to paper, we're going to be able to tell you a more accurate number. But I would say you're probably going to get at least ten.
All right, Jim's got something to add.
The other part of that is Eric has a long-term trail plan that goes through here. And this provides a mechanism if it were to, you're ever able to get a trail going up to the former Dresser Rand site. This is the avenue where that would be going through.
Okay.
So that's, that's something that says a backstop. That's another side benefit here.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Eric other than that? Did you have something that left there?
Just if you agree to approving purchase, we'd bring back a purchase agreement and a deed at a later date as well. So this would be just kind of the first step to allow us and our attorney to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Next up is proposed consent agenda for April twentieth. First one is resolution approving nuisance abatements of Vera's properties. Nothing special there that we should see, same old operators, it looks like. Do you have anything to add to that, Eric? No? Number two is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Burlington, Iowa and the city of West Burlington, Iowa for the two thousand and twenty West Avenue Gear Avenue Dalbar retrofit pro, project.
The resolution in front of you would prove something that I talked about in the previous two meetings with the Dalbar retrofit project along West Avenue and Gear. A part of, is an exhibit, is the actual memorandum of agreement, or memorandum of understanding, I should say. We, we've actually entered in several of these with West Burlington in the past, Mount Pleasant Street and then Agency Streets projects. We had those in this type of documentation. And so it highlights that, not that we're, they're going to be obligated to a certain dollar figure, but a percentage of the project. And that they would reimburse us for our engineering costs that we would charge, we charged to the project, but then they would also cover that too. So the estimated costs, we have a larger portion. We also, we have a large portion of road. Four hundred and thirteen thousand versus a hundred and ninety thousand. I think it maybe seems a little bit like they have relatively equal share, but we have quite a bit more roadway to cover than they do, so.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Any questions? No? All right, thank you, Nick. Number three is a resolution of support for the Great River Road All-American Road designation by the Federal Highway Administration.
We had a request from Lisa Walsh. And on, for, for this, they're, they are, the group is looking for, what is the group that's listed in there? I hate, I can't remember. The Great River.
River Road, yeah, commission.
They would like to see the, the River Road get this designation there. This is really kind of a field, as far as I'm concerned, what the city is doing is a feel-good letter of support as they go after and seek this national designation. It's something that they're hoping, trying to put together as, as part of their overall package to get it. It would be a benefit to the community just to be able to have that. The whole eastern side of the, the state really is, it's a ten county area that is going after this designation, so. Recommend doing, it's not one that, there's anything that has any ties or commitments from the city on it.
Okay. Any questions for Jim on that, gang? No?
Is that something like Illinois has on their side that they have, they call the Great River Road or whatever? You ever been on Illinois' side and just follow the river?
Yeah, same, same concept, yeah. Number four is a resolution approving agreement with Klinger and Associates for design of a retaining wall roadway to the wastewater treatment plant.
So this project, this item and then the following item are, are connected in its function. They're approved through separate contracts. This is a professional services agreement with Klinger to do their, a retaining wall for the roadway that goes down to the wastewater treatment plant. And there were some images that should have been in the packet. If you want to throw those up, Eric, that'd be, it may be a good idea. During a heavy rain event during last year's disaster declaration. The, the retaining wall washed out. It's a stacked limestone wall located just off of Main Street on a roadway down towards the wastewater treatment plant. And you can see the bottom picture, some of the stone, all the, a bunch of the stones are falling over. And so in here, you could see that FEMA, I have, that FEMA is going to cover seventy-five percent of the cost to do this damage. But I, I made a guess on that we were going to use the remaining FEMA monies reimbursement for the rest of the disaster to cover our part of it. The, the design cost is fifteen thousand to do that. The reason why it's pretty low is because we're tying that with the, the water main project. That's the next item. So I, I have faith in Klinger to be able to do this. This is a relatively easy project to draw. This is a relatively easy project to draw, but, uh, there will be some hoops to jump through with FEMA, uh, on how this works.
Jim, did you have something to add?
Just that, uh, this is a FEMA project, we know, we're sitting with five hundred thousand in a hole right now on our FEMA account, or more. And we're gonna go much farther as we go through this process and I, I mean, we'll have to figure out where we end up as we get them done, but these are all projects that need to get fixed as a result of last year's, uh, flooding and storms. Um, at the end of the day, if there is a shortfall, we'll be covering that with general fund.
Jim, are we gonna replace that exactly how it looked before? I mean, it looks just like.
Uh, that's one of the options to see, well, you can go through the four options.
Looks like it's ready to fall apart.
So there, there are questions on what we do to replace that wall. Because it's federal funds involved, they involve their historical and cultural people in this and we've had a discussion with, uh, our state historic preservation organization and they don't believe that this would have to be stacked in the same mechanism. The city engineer and I believe that a concrete poured wall with proper drainage is the best fix from function.
It looks like you'd fix it and it just would fall apart again.
That's what we're afraid of, so that's why I said there's some hoops to jump through on what we actually do. Trying to replace that wall going down to the bottom, creating a good base and then stacking what stones we have left and/or finding likewise stuff, that can get relatively expensive on trying to be able to do that. So I think a cast in place makes the most sense, so. We have a, an MSC wall, which is essentially pre-cast concrete blocks. A Gabian basket wall would be relatively cheap, um, but we'll see what, where it goes. So they're gonna help guide us through that process.
Thanks Nick.
Okay, so no other questions on that. Number five is resolution approving press, professional service agreement for, with Klinger and Associates for the design of the water main at the wastewater treatment plant.
So this is a separate contract with Klinger to design water main, um, down to the wastewater treatment plant. The reason for it being separate is for the FEMA aspect of it. Um, the, the wastewater, the water main to the wastewater treatment plant was a, a CIP item in this current year's budget, uh, budgeted with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do the work. Um, so in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, the wastewater treatment plant suffered from a break, uh, in the water main from the railroad tracks to wastewater treatment plant. Uh, our engineering staff designed and quickly replaced, uh, the water main there, but the pr, the segment between the, the break or the new segment that we did, um, and the connection at Main Street, uh, is still the same age, um, and there's some concerns about getting that replaced. Uh, this project will involve going underneath the BNSF main line, uh, which will involve us, uh, jacking and casing, uh, the water main. Uh, so there'll be a little bit of maneuvering to, to get BNSF to sign off on stuff. I don't think that they should have a problem with it, there's already existing lines and stuff underneath there, but, uh, it takes some time to, to go through those hoops.
Do we have to have like flaggers and stuff like we have in other projects?
Yeah, uh, but the, the time or the duration that those flaggers will be required will be relatively low. Um, you're not talking, they'll, they'll, they shouldn't be boring underneath the railroad tracks, would be my guess, um, to make that relatively quickly, so. This contract is eleven thousand dollars. You can see the two, uh, you know, contracts and why they kind of get paired together. You're gonna do a lot of the geotechnical and survey work together, um, so I think eleven thousand dollars to do a water main design is pretty cheap.
Pretty cheap.
We couldn't do it for that cheap for our percentage cost, so I think it makes sense.
Okay, any questions on that gang? No? Uh, number seven is a resolution approving amendment number one to the existing professional services agreement with H.R. Green, Inc. Six, oh, I did, oh, I didn't do six, my bad. Thanks Rob.
It was not a hygiene issue, I was looking ahead. He was out of the way, you were out of the way, so I dialed over that way, you can't make a foot difference, it would be hard to sneak between you two, sitting where you're sitting or, and I get a little coughs every once in a while and. You know, I'm, I'm an at-risk employee being as old as I am.
Sorry about that Jim, I, it's number, uh, or Don, number six is resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement with H.R. Green, Cedar Rapids for Engineering Services on the Burlington, Iowa Wastewater Treatment Facilities North and Odor Control, Odor Control.
Yeah.
Please.
We have a, an existing agreement with H.R. Green to engineer the, um, odor control project that's for the north end of the plant, which by the way, the act, the contractor is supposed to show up on site this coming Monday and start the work. We anticipate that work to be completed before the end of this fiscal year. So we're looking forward to getting that project done. This is for the engineering portion of that, uh, project with H.R. Green. Um, H.R. Green submitted, uh, they approached me initially and then with my authorization approval, they submitted a request for an amendment to that original agreement. Uh, as the, uh, council item memo to the city manager indicates, uh, the original agreement, engineering agreement with H.R. Green was for seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, you may recall that when we went through the bidding process, we had an anomaly occur where our low bidder was notified prior to award that a major player in their, uh, bid, uh, the metal portion of the project, which is a significant portion of the project, was withdrawing from the project and supplying the materials. Uh, they had made some errors in interpreting the specifications and our low bidder was in a difficult situation. There was a number of telephone calls, uh, some legal advice was gained, some suggestions, some various options. And ultimately we did end up with awarding to the low bidder, uh, for an amount that was beneficial to the city, uh, as far as the overall cost of the project. And they, the engineers ended up spending what they're indicating to be four thousand three hundred and five dollars of extra work. That would be beyond the normal and customary type of work that would associated with a bidding and award for a project such as this. And so they're asking for, to be reimbursed for those costs. In addition to that four thousand three hundred and five dollars, of course, we have this COVID nineteen thing going on, uh, they're asking that we include up to, up to five thousand dollars additional costs if in fact they do experience additional costs associated with COVID nineteen as the construction phase continues. Uh, so that would be at an at-cost type, uh, time and material type, uh, reimbursement. Uh, it may amount to very little, it may amount to up to five thousand, but not to exceed. So they're just asking that that be part of the amendment, uh, to the agreement. So the total amendment is for the, uh, up to nine thousand, uh, three hundred and five dollars, of which four thousand three hundred and five dollars definitely would be, uh, reimbursing them for costs associated with that bidding and awarding procedure. That's what this, this is all about.
We don't really have too much of a choice, we need to get that done and I can understand them asking for it, so. Does anybody have any questions from, from Don on that?
The only question I would have is the additional time that they spent doing what they needed to do, the forty-three oh five, was that as a result of their error or the bidder's error?
No, no, that was the bidding process.
Okay. Alright, any other questions? No comments? Number seven, my ear up here Don, resolution approving amendment number one to the existing professional services agreement with H.R. Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for general consulting services for the Burlington, Iowa wastewater treatment facility for the period of July first, twenty nineteen to June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay, this is a, an amendment that I'm requesting. We have, uh, an agreement, an existing agreement with, with H.R. Green. I've had a working relationship with H.R. Green for most of the time I've been with the city. They've done quite a bit of work for the city on the wastewater facility. Of all the firms that are out there, they are the most familiar with our facility. Um, we have a history of contacting them and asking them questions, ideas, confirmations on particular aspects dealing with the plant. And I approached the council, I believe it was, uh, two years ago, it could have been possibly three years ago, and asked them if they would sign off, approve a general engineering agreement to where we could make those phone calls, they could do minor projects for us and, uh, we would reimburse them for their time and effort spent on answering those questions or doing those small projects without going through additional hoops and such. And the council approved it. Each year I put ten thousand dollars, this upcoming budget year I do have fifteen thousand dollars in the, uh, budget for those purposes. So when I come to the council at the end of this current fiscal year, year, I'll have a, a request to renew an agreement with them for the next fiscal year in the amount of fifteen thousand. This particular year, uh, we had ten thousand dollars in the budget, um, we spent that ten thousand dollars already and of course we still have a remaining portion of the year to go. Uh, they've provided us assistance, we've asked some questions and design work on a doorway through a wall of a digester, how we would go about that, what would be involved, what the cost would be associated with that. Uh, we've also had them do work for us on tunnel leaks and we've also had them do us a review of our SCADA system, which out of that study, uh, we incorporated in the CIP during budget time, uh, projections of how much money we would need as the years go on to start to upgrade our SCADA system. Uh, as you know, computer systems, controls age and need to be replaced, software companies stop supporting certain, uh, certain, um, software package. And, uh, so anyway, I find myself where we've spent our ten thousand, we have a few other projects, minor projects that we'd like them to look at. And, uh, so I'm coming to the council to ask if you'd be willing to approve an amendment to amend that existing agreement and add another five thousand dollars into that to where we could continue to work with them for the remaining of this fiscal year.
What are the minor projects?
Uh, one of them has to do with, uh, mitig, waters, uh, stormwater mitigation and river groundwater mitigation around the digester area. Uh, another area has to do with, uh, internal in the process associated with our, uh, well, pumping process water in the plant.
So I'm, I, Mr. Fair, nothing but respect for you, but so I'm not trying to be rude, but in all your years of experience, are any of these things that you would be able to solve on your own?
No.
Okay.
No.
So these are people that you need?
We've used electrical engineers, we've used process engineering by them, we've done, we've also used structural engineering. Types of questions that we have require professional engineers to evaluate the various, um, disciplines that are within the wastewater process.
Any other questions for Don on this? Alright, thank you sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks Don. Um, number eight, resolution approving a federal aid agreement for Iowa's transportation alternatives program, Iowa's TAP project between the Iowa Department of Transportation and the city of Burlington. Hi Eric.
Hello. So this is kind of a continuation, we approved some Title VI agreements a couple weeks ago for this project as well, um, but this is the, uh, TAP project we applied for a few years ago and were awarded funds, um, for the connection on West Avenue between Terrace and Roosevelt. Uh, we recently completed, uh, with similar funds on Mason Road, uh, the trail that connects from the Edstone School over, uh, past Sunrise West, um, but this portion is kind of the connection between the hospital and then Edstone School. This is kind of a standard federal aid agreement, uh, these are transportation alternative funds, uh, that we applied for and received, uh, which are funded through the, uh, surface transportation block grant program. So, uh, with those type of funds, federal funds, they require this, uh, um, federal aid agreement to be signed prior to expending any funds and moving forward with the project. Um, part of this is, uh, with all our TAP projects that, uh, we have to maintain, uh, the trail for twenty years, uh, for, upon completion. We did have, uh, forty-one thousand budgeted, uh, for this trail with, uh, two hundred and fifty-six thousand in grants, uh, to complete the trail. Any questions on the project or on the, um, item here?
Any questions gang?
No, I will say that I used to jog that portion of Mason Road when it was still grass and, um, and then I moved to the other side of town, so I don't jog it anymore and I'm, I'm jealous every time I drive by.
What was our funding breakdown? How much are we?
So we had forty-one thousand eight hundred in sales tax, uh, we did get a Wellmark grant of eighteen thousand as well.
Yeah.
So that helps improve the signalization crossing on Roosevelt Avenue, upgrading that crossing so that it's a safe crossing, we're push button and countdown timer. Uh, to enable people to cross Roosevelt, which is always a, kind of a tricky situation. So that's part of this project as well as upgrading the signalization at that crossing.
Any other questions?
So we're paying, we have a match then, we have a portion we're paying?
Yeah, the forty-one thousand eight hundred is our local match.
Jim?
One of the, that, I'll email the, the sheets that I sent to, that we put up earlier, uh, but we had originally had two trails that we were budgeting to be paid for with local option sales tax funds, a hundred thousand towards one and forty-one thousand towards this one. Uh, the hundred thousand towards the, the second one, I'm recommending that we don't do and part of it, we, we haven't gotten, we haven't gone after the funds yet anyway.
Is that the trail along the airport?
That's, no, that.
Flint River Trail on Bluff Road.
It's one, it's, it's another connection piece on the, yeah, the Flint River Trail. Um, but this one, I did recommend in moving forward, uh, because we are farther along in this process.
This will complete the connection from Sunrise West up to the hospital.
And the other one, I'm not saying that we don't do, it's just, it gets delayed and try to figure out where it fits within the next five years.
I know the other one too and actually where you cut off and you can go around behind Case, um, what do you, I think it's Cash Street or whatever, it, it's very minimal traffic, so if anyone's listening in, once you leave the trail on Bluff Road and, and head on Cash Street behind Case, um, it's smooth sailing after that, um, as long as it's not flooded out in the bottom somewhere. But yeah, so, alright, that's why I.
Eric, uh, on the map you have up there, what portion are we doing? We're doing the portion that sits between Roosevelt and Terrace right now.
Yeah, the pink portion.
And then the pink portion where you've got that crossing that leads to the trail that runs along the middle school there, is there gonna be a signal there?
It'd be a, it won't be a full stop, but there'd be a push button with a light, I believe, at that location and it would be a designated crossing area that people would cross on, so, uh, that's kind of, we've seen with other trails where it's not a, a full stop, but you push the button, you wait for the light and then you make sure traffic's slowing down to stop at that location. Yeah, flashing yellow light will be associated with that yield sign. So the trail right now cuts, empties out behind Fairway right into the middle of the intersection.
Yeah.
So this'll be designed in a safe location where there's not a good crossing point because there's, everything's offset.
Well, I remember one of the conversations we've had several times is trying to create a safe corridor for crossing traffic there for schoolgoers, more along the, um, what's the name of that, Willow, Willow Street there, trying to create a better crossing there. Are we gonna try and funnel people to this crossing? It makes it more difficult because they would have to cross Terrace, which is almost counterproductive because you're going from one busy street to another. But are we gonna try and use that in this case or just, just to create this?
And they could come on the backside of the school and use the trail and go all the way up and head straight across this way, it just depends what way they walk as they leave school, but.
Okay.
This would be a safe alternative for them.
Alright.
But yeah, the, as you may have seen, the West Burlington got a grant as well to connect from where we end at the hospital on Division Street North up to SEC. So this connection will be from SEC all the way to Edstone down to Sunrise West of a full ten-foot wide or eight-foot wide pedestrian trail.
Sounds good. Alright, and then we'll have, uh, set dates for public hearings from May fourth. The first one is consideration of ordinance amendment to ordinance. The first one is consideration of ordinance amendment to ordinance number 3220, an ordinance creating a Sunrise West planned unit development, PUD overlay district by removing Outlot G from Sunrise West, PUD. Another hearing day, another public hearing will be consideration of an ordinance rezoning Lot 4 of Swisher subdivision and of Outlot G of the fourth addition to the Sunrise West subdivision from R1 single-family residential to R4 multi-family residential with a planned unit development overlay zone Beverly Place, PUD, as allowed by the zoning code of the City of Burlington, Iowa. Three is a, another hearing is consideration for ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 161 Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. And number four, consideration of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of the Connor Rideaway located north of Core Street, Burlington, Iowa. Moving on to the discussion items, first up is presentation for homeless help, Richard McIntyre. Mr. McIntyre, are you on the line?
I've got two people on, I don't know if either of them are here.
I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine, sir.
Okay, so you guys have the presentation, have I, you're right?
Yes.
Powerpoint?
Give us just one second here.
Hold on one second, we don't have the PowerPoint, we'll have your letter.
Are you on the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
Eric, I see you have PowerPoint, Dave.
Yeah, he's got, he's got his. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so first of all, I want to thank you guys for a second to talk to consider this. At transitions, we're running into a situation that I think is unprecedented with the pandemic. So that's why I'm here today. The first slide is just above contact list of how, you know, our services. And then the second, the second slide is to look at that one. Our mission statement is our goal at transition B and B is to offer an assistance program for the years of shelter, housing, food, and basic needs and health on items. We seek to place them on a path of simple integration or reintegration into the community that's allowing them to prosper and contribute in a positive manner to those communities we serve in southeast Iowa. On a search of life, we just work with a place of grace and with a heart of gratitude. Now, first, I want to thank you for the support that you've given us in the fiscal year 20, you have a lot of the $1,000. This time, I'm going to come to, we're coming to you to ask for additional funds. And the reason for that is I'll go into a little bit later, but we are right now, we're having a bit of a problem with housing and we are working from a terrible place with not being able to use our facility because we have high-risk residents, we have high-risk administration, and we are not finished with the construction, a project which was upgrading our facility. And I'll go into that a little bit later in the presentation. So why is this important? This is slide five. Why is this important especially now? So the negative impacts are, there's an increased rate of infection, and that's across the nation. There hasn't been any for Burlington yet, but it's coming, I think. We just are trying to mitigate those, that problem before it comes here. Well, we have increased exposure for first responders, police firefighters, paramedics, and healthcare providers, and increased possible community outbreak and an increase in likelihood of our medical facility being overwhelmed. I'm sure you've heard all of that on television and that news. How can we accomplish this goal with this slide six? Well, we're going to ask for assistance from local state government. We are applying for emergency funding for FEMA. We've applied for grants and service loans, and we're seeking other funding options as they become available. Craig, Craig Pinson, our president, has been on conference call, I've been on a couple with him this week. We are working with other state and local chapters to see how we're going to go about seeking those grants. We have applied for some grants, it's been approved for some, but that money's not going to be coming anytime soon. Where we are now, we're, we're housing homeless people right now at hotels. The reason that we're doing that is because our facility's under construction and they've caught us in the midst of that. And so we basically had to shut down production, we had to shut down the construction project. We had to incur the additional cost of placing people in hotels. And then we had a couple of possible, we don't know because we weren't able to test, we had a couple of positives, possible positive cases that we had to, had to isolate. And we are, what we do also is we assist these people, what I would think a lot of people don't understand, is that we do assist these people with job placement. Not only are they homeless, the, one of the main things that we do also is we try to place them in jobs. A lot of them have jobs, a lot of them are placed in jobs, a lot of them find jobs, you know, when we're working with them. But we are, they're not all just indigents, homeless people. A lot of them do have employment, they just need that extra step to get started back in a, in a productive life. And then we're working with community leaders across the state to try to, you know, find out what we, what we've got. The slide, the, the post on the left is the, this is a good friend of mine from California. He's a priest in San Francisco and he's been a friend of mine since childhood. And he posted this the other day, I thought it was very relevant. He said that it's done that 70 people in their shelter were positive. And they, they were seeking to do, well, the exact same thing that we're doing, is get these people into hotel rooms, isolate them, keep them from exposing our community to the possibility of an infection. So that was just the slide that I thought was impactful. Okay, what costs are we incurring? Right now, we're, we're incurring housing costs at what we call hotels. That's averaging, averaging that's about $1,000 a day. Like now, I'll go into this a little bit later, right now, we're kind of in the red on that. We're, flip flops, we're supplying clothing and personal hygiene items, we're assisting with deposits and grants for permanent housing, and we're setting them up for any of their basic housing needs that they've got. The reason that we've lost funding is that funding from normal channels right now is dwindling because of the, people are prepared for onset of this pandemic. And I think people, you know, are holding on to the money. Also, you know, we are a, we're a 501(c)(3), so we depend on that, that funding to, we depend on people's disposable income, and it's just not available right now. Now, going to slide nine. So right now, our, our current emergency fiscal need, we have a current $12,000 debt at hotel right now that we need to eliminate. We need funding for a possible two additional weeks at the hotel, and we need assistance in completing the construction cost of our facility. And we would like to get training and development for our staff, and that would be in, in a process to make us more independent in the future. And I think this is something that, that we all, that would benefit us as a, as an organization, but it would also benefit the community because it would make us more independent should we act, should this happen to us again, or something similar to this. Now, this is, the next slide is just slide 10. That's the reapportionment reevaluation. So these are the increases in the United, you got some with the budget. Looked over the budget, I saw the increases for services for the city. And then on slide 11, these are the decreases. The decreases are really the, the services that impact organizations such as ours the most, physical, social services, mental health services, and county environmental education. Overall decrease for physical of the year, for physical year 20, 18.68% in the budget. Now, going to slide 12. With the reapportionment of evaluation with a total dollar increase, it affects the $634,132 that impacts service loss of 102,000 in average. Now, what we're asking for, and this is pie in the sky, guys, this is really, would get us back in the red, it would get us out of the hotels, we're not incurring that $1,000 a day cost. It would finish our facility and allow us to move forward and service these people in a more expedient manner because we'd be able to work in our facility with an office staff and move these people through faster. Currently, we're housing about 24 people right now. And then going to the last slide, just gives the contact information again. I didn't want to take up too much time, I didn't know how much time I had, so pardon me for speaking so fast, but you guys have the slide, you have my letter in front of you. I did send additional information to Eric, which is the National Health Care for the Homeless Council brief, and that's what we're basing our standards of care on at the moment. This is the brief that contains everything about how the CDC is recommending the homeless handle, the homeless population moving forward. This is really a strategy that, that is being developed on the slide. We're, we're just moving along with the service and following these strategies as best we can. But that's our, that's our proposal, that's what we're asking. We're asking for a total of about $80,000 to get us back into the red, take us through until we can get back into being self-sufficient. And we, it feel like that we are doing a tremendous service for the community because these people are the most at-risk group. And if we have one infection, there was, there was a situation in Albany, Georgia, that where one person infected, town populated at 75,000, they had 38 ICU beds, and in a matter of weeks, that, that medical facility was overrun. So we have, we have a population of around 25,000, so just take that as an example of what could happen. We're just trying to mitigate the impact of the possible pandemic, keep Burlington community safe, and that's just, you know, we were proud to do it, we're happy to have the opportunity to do it, but we want to expand and be able to service more people. We just need a little help, extra help in the interim. Some of this would be considered alone, if that's the way you guys want to approach it, we're all, we're open to that. So, but right now, if we don't get funds coming in, we're going to have to stop serving this community with helping the homeless situation. We're just running ourselves in the red and we can't continue to do that. So, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Anybody have any questions for him? Counsel? I think you addressed everything in there.
You said you were following the guidelines of CDC?
Yeah, the CDC's put out, it's put out a brief, and I sent that to Eric also to distribute to you guys. It's from the National Health Care for the Homeless Council. There's an entire brief there, and we're following those strategies. And that's exactly what they're, you know, putting people in hotels, keeping them away if they're, if they show fever or signs of infection. Of course, we can't get testing right away, so we just do our best right now. We have, we've had two cases where we had to isolate people. But right now, we're housing 24, that, that's where we are today, at 24.
Thank you. And while I, I don't disagree with the guidelines of the CDC, I know there are families in our community, they, they can't guarantee their families in a hotel, it'd be cost prohibitive. Wondering if there's anywhere else we can house these people?
Well, and that would, that would be at our facility if we could get the facility finished. Unfortunately, we ran into this pandemic in the middle of that construction and had to basically shut down the facility and the construction. That's how we're asking for the cost to finish the construction project. We have most of the construction materials ready to go, most of the construction cost would come from labor.
Any other questions for Mr. McIntyre?
And certainly that is not a big number of, you know, if we could get, if we could, if we can come in with the construction cost less, we certainly, you know, would like to do that. That's just our estimation of what it's going to take to get it finished.
Okay. Sounds good. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. McIntyre? And Eric, would, do we have, we have his contact info there, that's correct, I'm sorry. All right, sir, well, thank you for your presentation, and we'll, we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you, appreciate your time, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank, thank you for all you do. Okay, second discussion item is the Statue of Liberty.
Could you throw out those images from the packet, please, Eric?
So the Statue of Liberty is listed on here. When the flood wall was in process, the statue, you can see in the image here, was down on the riverfront. The flood wall project was going to be in the way of where that was located, so we had to remove her. She's currently located at Public Works in our shop, just kind of sitting there figuring out what to do. And I guess that's the reason why I'm here to talk to you all about how we would like to proceed with what we do with her. You can see some images, she has weathered some vandalism and some, you know, other things out in the-
This is its current state, right?
Current, correct.
Because we did a rehab on this-
Once before.
Ten years ago, 15 maybe? When we put it at the riverfront. And it actually sat in Crapo Park for what, probably 30 years originally? It was a Boy Scout project, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
And it's been rehabbed at least twice before as a result of that. So anyways, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
So I, we, we reached out to the previous rehabber, the, from the University of Iowa metallurgist, they're no longer doing it. So we tried to find out, you know, where could we get this done at? Mr. Hill, Brayden, found a company in Omaha, Nebraska that does rehab work, and I just got this today. To be able to rehab her with either a patina or a glossy finish would be $8,400. The only added alternative is to put a, to make, I probably can't use that, is to make the flame gilded, and it would make it shinier. But in the end, you're looking at $8,400 to rehab her, to bring her, you know, put her, her horns back and then polish the copper.
Do you have any thoughts where you would place her when she was rehabbed in?
That was the other part of the conversation. I know that it, it has been at the riverfront for a number of years. I, from talking with Brayden, who's been with the city for 35-plus years, said that when it was in Crapo, it got vandalized quite a bit because it was kind of tucked away. And on the riverfront, it didn't get vandalized as much, but when it's out in the open and there's something that can be done, it is. I think the riverfront, I talked with Leo today, we're looking if, you know, if it could be put back to the riverfront, where would you put it? That's the, this is the main reason why we needed to talk about it as a, as a city council to, to figure out where would it go if you would spend the money to rehab it.
So I have a, what I consider to be a great idea. We just removed a statue that sat right in front of the new police station, what, two years ago? So, and there's already the foundation there for a statue. Putting it at the police station would not only hopefully eliminate any new vandalism, but it'd also put it in a place where it could potentially be seen more pedestrians and whatnot and with the new riverfront projects or the Tiger project that we got going on. In my opinion, that's a natural place for it to go.
What did they do with that?
It would be big enough for it, it already has like a seating space and what I would call hardscape garden there for a statue, but there's no statue. So if we're looking for a place, that to me seems to be the natural fit.
What did they do with that, that monument of the ceremony?
It went out to SEC, I believe, didn't it?
Because that was part of a foundation. Was it the Widdies?
Yeah, I believe it got moved out to the SEC, the new science center.
I'd be agreeable with that, I think that's an awesome idea.
I like the idea of it being elevated-
Yeah.
-to keep people from vandalizing it.
Absolutely, yeah. But again, I mean, if you're going to try and cut down on vandalism, why not put it right smack dab in front of the police station?
Good point.
Well, it's our property, we can do whatever we want to.
Just making sure.
Yeah, I mean, the, the problem with it before, it's always been too short, so it's too easy to climb. My biggest concern would be, you know, I'm, I'm okay with the position, I think that's great, but with the dollars that we have, we're looking at 8,400, it, it might be that the lucky lady liberty might have to wait a little bit unless we can do some fundraising.
Well, I would say it probably makes sense to try and tie this into whatever Tiger work we're going to do, right? Coming up with $8,400 in the Tiger project to rehab this as a result of it would make sense.
Then you have to follow federal guidelines on that as well. So I, I don't know that you can just plop this into the middle of the Tiger grant spending because you've got a bunch of other things that you're trying to do. However, if you're trying to, and all I meant by when I talked to Leo was a planning of the layout of what the riverfront would look like. And from an architect's standpoint, where could you put it that would make sense?
Well, instead of just plucking in on the riverfront, we, coming up, we would have two years to come up with $8,400 to get it rehabbed or potentially have somebody in the community come forward and say, I'd be interested in helping with this.
Well, we, we'd need- Well, we'd need to see what the Tiger grant plan is for that space first, because we didn't really address that, did we, in the Tiger?
We aren't really adjusting, doing a whole lot of adjustments in front of the police station.
Go ahead, Jim.
Stephanie, I was just talking about this, chief isn't here, so I'm not really sure what his thoughts are on this. I think that they had a desire to see the other structure leave from there, but I don't know if they had any thoughts or concerns about having something in that spot, and I think that we'd want to make sure we took that input in.
Well, but the reason why I suggested that space is if we, if we decide to rehab her, it's $8,400, but then it's how many thousands of dollars to put in the infrastructure to support it? We've already got that.
The previous iteration, Mr. Scott and I had a little bit of a conversation, was that Mason had donated the work for that, and the previous podium work that it was on is, was not any light work. It was a, you know, in today's world, it would be fairly expensive to put that back up. And so that's why, the reason why this is coming back up is because, one, we haven't talked about it as a group, what do you want to do with her? Because I know that I get questions on, you know, occasion, that we just took her and scrapped her sort of thing, but I, I want to know, one, what, what do you want to do? If you want to wait for a period of time, that is yours to do, I just don't know what to do with her, and if I get asked, I want to know that I've at least had the conversation of what we're going to do and where we're going to put her.
If we, if we were, I guess where I'm at on it, Nick, is like, I think Matt's got a great idea about location, assuming that it's okay with the chief and the PD department in the city. You know, I remember when they put it on the riverfront, there was a big discussion about which direction she was pointing, and half the people were happy and half weren't. The nice thing about that location is it basically is going to face one way. My big concern with COVID-19 is we have a lot of other issues that are coming at us, and I don't know if we right now have the funds to do that, but we can make that a priority and look for funding sources for it. So, as far as would I like to see it placed, and I know Tim, Tim Scott's emailed me a few times on it, and I agree with him, I don't want it to get lost out of Public Works, but I don't know how high a priority is. We do have a couple of years to work on it because of Tiger grant, so I, I think if the chief weighs in and thinks that location may be worthwhile, I think that's a great spot. Or we could maybe find it somewhere along Jefferson Street or on Main Street rather than the riverfront, because the more traffic around it, there's going to be less, less vandalism, I hope, so, that's where I'd be at.
We could potentially rehab it for the last time.
Yeah, I was wondering if we could put some type of coating on it that would help it not need rehab so much.
And so that's, that was, there's two different finish op, and options, the patina is more the, the look that you see there, and then, can I put that on there? It might give a better idea, it's a, it's a, I'll just hand it to you, that might be easier.
But how's that stand up, like gilded?
It, it's, so they, they actually put a finish on it that makes it pretty glossy. I don't know how long that lasts, but the cost for the patina-type look or this is the same. The $300 difference between the 84 and 87 is simply for the golded flame.
Yeah, so, I agree with John, I think he's trying to say we have bigger fish to fry coming down the pipes, but I'm interested in getting her back. I think our community would like to see her back, and I know Tim, Tim's worked hard on this, and he'd like to see it, see it back. I'd be interested in a finish that would be more durable, and we wouldn't have to pay to maintain it so much. And then I, I also envision it would look nice with some type of water structure, whether that's a drinking fountain or something, and almost make it like a place where visitors to our community could get a photo, something like that, so, I'm not opposed to waiting a couple of years and really doing it right.
We could put on, we could put it on the other pier that, at the Riverfront Park, but we'd have to find a nice donor to crane it out there, but if that pier was available, because we have the one pier that you can walk out on, the other pier could be facing Burlington, and basically, there's no way anybody would vandalize it from there on, but let's, we, we need to discuss that, discuss those locations.
One thing I would say is an asset, the closer water to water it is, it's likely going to have more erosion, more cleaning necessary, things like that, so. Reason why I also suggested, where I suggested was because, kind of kicking the can down the road on funding the rehab of it, which is why I thought we could do that.
Well, this is the whole reason why I brought it here, is to get a general direction, we haven't discussed it, it's something we took down, that I know that has significance to some people, so, till I hear otherwise from the council, she's perfectly safe.
From a financial.
It's low priority right now, Nick, is what I would say, but I think we could, we could reach out and say, okay, if we were going to place it, the first step is where would we place it? And I, I like that idea, I think there's some other spots that might be worthwhile, but I would say we need to put it in a high-traffic spot. And then is, now was the plate, wasn't there a plate on that base, did they keep that?
And there was, so what came with it, there was, I think there was a plate at the bottom, and there was also a time capsule that was inside of the monument as well.
And we have those things?
That's all safe in our building.
So then, then assuming, you know, now that we can identify the money, maybe we can also do some fundraising for that, you know, there's a few phone calls, might be worthwhile to get it ramped up a little bit.
I think they did a penny drive the last time.
Yeah, something like that, so, it's, it's, I think the council's all united, it's a, it's a priority, but it's really low given our current situation with the COVID, so, but we can still work toward some thoughts about where it's at, and then maybe do some fundraising for it and go see what we can do. Okay?
Thank you.
But don't, don't throw it away, Nick. I knew you weren't. Alright, my computer just blanked out.
Jim Olson appointment.
Thank you. To the regional planning commission revolving loan fund, it's recommended we reappoint him for a three-year term, does anybody have any questions with that?
Nope.
Nope, and then future discussion items are, once again, move down the road, presentation by the Impact 7G Cascade Bridge, parking passes, friends at Cascade Bridge, Lisa Walsh and Terry Ariano. Is there anything else staff has for us for the work session today?
I will likely have an addition to the council meeting, it is for the flood wall project that's currently built. As you may remember, we had some issues with some cracking on the wall, and we had done a, a release of retention funds, we actually did two of them. There are still $10,000 remaining, the contractor has done what they were obligated to do, and so we would need to release that final $10,000 to finish the contract. It's something that should, should have been taken care of a couple of months ago, but communication kind of got lost, so, that will likely get added to the next meeting.
On the next phases, is it the same contractor for the next phase?
We haven't bid that out, so we won't know until we do that, so. They would stand a strong likelihood because they just completed a section of it, but we have not bid that out yet.
Alright, anything else? Don, you have anything? Jim, no? Stephanie? Rich? Eric? Alright, counsel? Well, I would say that's it, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for tuning in and, and calling.